This meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' June 16, 2021 order, extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, Section 20. Per open meeting law, any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of this meeting. Gosh, I haven't had to say that in such a long time. I guess that's a good thing, since we've been meeting in person. Let's go right into the agenda. Secretary Ekstrom will not be with us tonight, so I will do the roll call as best I can. Let's see, Member Denise.
Here.
And Member Wall, Vice Chair Wall.
Here.
Member Martini.
Here.
Member Johnson Musad.
Here. I'm sorry for being late.
You're perfectly on time. You're great. And Member Ekstrom is not with us. And also not expected to be with us is Mayor Weidergartner. And I'm doing it from memory tonight. I don't think I forgot anyone. I think that's all of us. Susan Farby, you have enough for roll call there. We're good. Okay, and I call the meeting to an hour 6:01 PM. And I will happily do public comment. It's time. The way it works when we are on a remote meeting is we'll first take anyone that would be able to indicate in the chat that they're interested in public comment. I am actually looking around and not seeing. Anyway, well, if you're able to comment in the chat, and the chat, I should remind people, is only for indicating that you want to public comment. You're not allowed to use it for anything else during a public meeting. If anyone else can see in the chat, I am not seeing anyone indicating they would like to public comment. Does everyone agree with me on that? The chat appears to be empty. Okay, so I will also now do a call for anyone who's on the line and is unable to indicate through the chat that they want to make a public comment. You can indicate audibly now. Don't be shy. Going once, going twice. Okay. Public comment is over, and we'll move into our other agenda item for the evening. I'm really pleased to be able to bring this information. I want to thank, first of all, Director Hoffman from the Health Department and City, as well as Megan Tudrin, who's our public health nurse in the city, for their invitation to put this together. And my friend that I have not met yet, Dr. Sullivan, who I hear is an epidemiologist. What an exciting time to be an epidemiologist, but I digress, and I don't digress during meetings because they're already long enough, right? But the way it will work really is, I'd like you all to kind of take over and do whatever you have planned for us. And we'll certainly give school committee members opportunity, once you're done, to ask questions. So you can take it away. Whoever's going first. Thank you.
So, Jack, I will just say a quick thing before you start. So, one, I wanted to thank you all for having us present here tonight after Megan and I were at our last in-person meeting regarding masks. We said that we would come back before the fall with any information we have, because we were looking for an epidemiologist to join our staff. And I am very grateful to have found Jack Sullivan. He has joined our team, and he works with not only Greenfield, but Montague, Deerfield, and Sunderland. We have been able to obtain great data and great information through his efforts. A couple of the nurses are here, and without them collecting all these data, it couldn't have happened. So, as you all know, we have wastewater treatment management, so we could get information that way. We have information from people that are getting PCRs. We get information from people who let us know they're getting home tests, and as well as just following international and CDC guidelines. So on that note, I'm very pleased to introduce Jack Sullivan. This is an amazing presentation. And, Jack, thank you, and I'm ready to hear you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you to the members of the school committee for this opportunity. Briefly, give you a little background. I joined the collaborative about the beginning of May, and we've been looking through the data, poring over it, to see where we've been, where we are, and try to get a handle on where we're going. Very briefly, my background prior to coming to the collaborative, I worked for the state's contact tracing program as a member of Partners in Health. I worked as a contact tracer and a case investigator initially. And very early on, I was brought onto the Epidemic Intelligence Unit, which is somewhat of a unique team that we had other states do not have, where we investigated clusters, complex outbreaks, and things of that nature, and we shared that information with other states, other jurisdictions, so that we could try to get some sense of how this is being spread and how best to stem the transmission. With that in mind, is it possible for me to share my screen?
Yes, absolutely. Let's get that. Should be able to share now.
I can indeed. All right. This presentation that you're about to see is basically where we are. It's sort of laying the foundation for what we have done. I have focused on this primarily on school age and under-five cohort. I have made other presentations to the different boards of health and the different select boards so far. That's available if you'd like to see it at any time. But this is more directed towards the school committee. And again, it's foundational. It's a compilation of the data from the beginning and where we're at, where the surges are, what we're looking at for different statuses, and hopefully gives you a sense of the type of information that you might need to implement mitigation protocols and things of that nature. So initially, and again, I'm not, I doubt very much that I'm telling anybody anything that you don't know with this. The way that COVID goes, and it's cyclical in a community. So let's start with the school. Say a couple of kids are in the class together, and a third member comes in, and she's infectious. She ends up infecting two of the kids at the classroom. They bring it home. They infect their parents, their siblings, maybe their neighbors. In turn, the parents go out to work. Maybe an older sibling is working, or maybe the child itself is working at Big Y or Friendly's Ice Cream. While they're there, they have contact with community members, who then bring it out into the community and start to spread it that way, at restaurants, at other stores. Maybe a Little League coach and a gymnastics teacher are among those who are infected. They in turn spread it to kids on the team or kids in the gymnastics program, who in turn go back to their school and spread it again. You can pick out any one of those dots, and that's a starting point, and that's the way it goes. There's no boundary and there's no barrier that's going to keep COVID from spreading around there. We can say that we'll stop it in schools, for instance, but then we have to worry about home, and then we have to worry about work, because it's all cyclical. I have a cluster here. This has been anonymized. This was a cluster that we investigated in NEIU last year, but I think it's pretty demonstrative of the type of spread that we're looking at. And it brings to bear a couple of points that may kind of shake some of the ideas that people have in general. The thing about COVID and about spread is that opinions may change on it, but that's got nothing to do with what we're looking at. When the facts change, the science changes. And when the science changes, the recommendations change. So that's why it's always evolving. Keep in mind, we're still only dealing with a disease here that's a little over two and a half years in the making, and we have no experience with it prior to that. So we're learning on the fly. What we had here was 18 players on a football team. They had a social gathering that was completely outdoors. We didn't find anything to contradict that. You see the dot in the center. That's the index case. This player was infected, he believes, at a family barbecue prior to this social gathering with the players, and our investigation didn't turn up anything to contradict that. So we have two outside exposures. The index case, who then brought it to the football team for the social gathering, which was again outside. Out of the 18 players, 11 tested positive. So that's an attack rate of about 61%, a pretty significant spread right there. But what happens from there is it starts to get into, as we showed you in the earlier graphic, it starts to get into the home and into the other classrooms. You have, for instance, a couple of players who went into different classrooms. In Classroom A, there were two players who then affected seven other classmates. In Classroom B, where one player infected at least two others. So that brings it up to a total of about 20 at that point, nearly double the amount of the initial infection. From there, you had the sibling of one of the football players who was on a bus, who apparently infected another student who was sitting two rows in front of him, began to show symptoms five days later. Despite all of our attempts and all the investigations, we couldn't find anything to contradict the likelihood that he was infected by or exposed by the other student on the bus. The distance on that was 2 feet 9 inches between each row. This was two rows in front, so it's still less than 6 feet, which is within that parameter of what we're talking about. But it's also different from the way that Desi and CDC came out with the school distancing of 3 feet. So it's beyond the 3 feet, but within the 6 feet. The other thing to look at when you go back to the football teams and the exposure, again, it's outdoor. We've always been under the impression that outdoor exposure is very limited, and it's one of the least likely ways to be exposed, but we're finding more and more it can occur. The 6-foot, 15-minute rule of thumb is just that. It's a rule of thumb, and it's a good one to follow, but there's a lot of factors that go into it that can make it a little bit more risky as far as transmission goes. There is exertion. There is atmospheric pressure and climate, whether it's humid or not, a little chilly. All of those things go into whether or not the droplets can survive and can transmit beyond those guidelines that we have. So we're at this point where we've got another unrelated child who's been infected out of the initial spread. From there, he infects somebody in his classroom as well as another friend that he had a playdate with. At this point, we're talking about 24 cases, more than double what the initial is. But this is also where exponentially spreads, because from all of that, you've got all of their household members then who become infected. A total of another 25 household members from the original infection tested positive, bringing the total case count to 49 at the point that we were investigating this cluster. What's also interesting is, at that time, 75% of the eligible household cases had been vaccinated. At that time, we weren't looking at 5- to 12-year-olds being able to be vaccinated. This was just after the 12- to 16 was approved, so there wasn't full vaccination there. So we are talking mostly adults at that point. But out of the adult houses, the adult cases that there were, 75% of them had been vaccinated. Some of the takeaways that we had from this, and things that you want to keep in mind as you're replying, is that COVID-19 prevention measures are very effective when the case numbers remain relatively low, when you're able to catch it early. But in the case of an outbreak like we had here, where you have 18 plays and 11 of them testing positive, there's other mitigation measures that will become more effective at controlling the spread, and we can talk about those later on as well. And when there's evidence of an outbreak, quickly shifting to those measures can reduce the risk of further transmission. Expanding notification and testing recommendations outside of those can help parents remain vigilant. people can start to exhibit symptoms prior to testing positive. So for instance, somebody could be, could be sick on Friday and Saturday and turn negative and then on Monday test positive. So that's something to keep an eye on there. Widespread notification is helpful even when the transmitting risk is thought to be low. Including outdoor and bus contacts, which I just showed you in that graphic. And the key to all this is that families are very important communities, units, as well as drivers of the transmission. Exposures in the household increase the risk for community transmission. As, as it showed in that first graphic I showed you, the cycle that goes around. The one key factor in everything, in all of those situations are that there were family members that were involved, whether it's in work, whether it's community, social settings or schools. It all comes back to the families. This is a progressive chart of what the spread looked like in the four town collaborative in Montague. It comes out to be just under eight thousand cases since the beginning of it. As you can see very early on there, the first half to three quarters of the pandemic. At that point, you had a little less than three thousand between March of twenty twenty and November of twenty twenty-one. A perfect storm happens at this point. Omicron become, is first detected. The DESI began to ease their mask mandates and the state started to ease the social distancing and public gathering guidelines. And that's when this takes off, especially with Omicron. You can see how it climbs rapidly there, going from less than three thousand to nearly eight thousand now. We have about seventy percent of the total cases have occurred since December of this past year. So in an eight month period, we had more cases than we had in a little over twenty months prior to that. This is for Greenfield. It's the short graph on the positive school age cases by month, just for this year, this school year. As you can see in September, it was, you know, mid, about twenty twenty-two. Dropped a little bit in October, but then it started going up again, following that curve that you saw before. And you reach your peak in late December, in January, from Omicron, from the mask mandates being lifted, from the testing and other recommendations that were eased. It started dropping down again in February and in March, started going up again in May. What's significant about that is what we're finding is that Omicron has, I mean, COVID has been on about a four to five month cycle, which means every four to five months, you're going to get a surge. It may not be the same level as it was before, or in the case of Omicron, it may be higher than it was before, but every four or five months, it's going up again. And if that holds true, then we're looking at it again in about September or October for a surge to begin once more. By that time, BA four, BA five will be not so much waning, but they'll be taken over. There's another variant that's been identified as a variant of concern by the European CDC called BA two point seven five. Similar to BA four, BA five. That has the components of being immune invasive. But it also appears to be a little bit more virulent and even more transmissible. So that's something else to keep an eye on as well. This is a Greenfield specific vaccination status at this point for school age kids. The dark blue is our, the number per capita of the age groups that are fully vaccinated. The lighter blue is for the percent of the booster per capita. As you can see, the twelve to nineteen age range is fairly good. It's about a little over seventy percent in the twelve to sixteen. It's a little under seventy percent to the sixteen to nineteen. That would be helpful if that was a little bit higher. Five to twelve is low because that was late in getting approved. And under five is negligible. That was just recently approved by the CDC for them to receive the boosters. But that shows you that, you know, there's still there's still a ways to go as far as getting people vaccinated and it's not a matter of mandates, it's a matter of education, not a matter of advocacy. Some people have legitimate concerns over it. They have very deeply held beliefs and those need to be respected, but we also can offer the education as well as access. One of the things that I found interesting as I was looking through it. The state over the past week or so came out with a report on chronic absenteeism. For the different schools, the districts in the state. As you can see here, this is twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. A little bit concerning as far as the absent of ten or more days and the chronically absent of ten percent or more. But it's still fairly low. You're looking at chronically absent across the district at a little over twenty percent. The absent ten or more days is just about forty-six percent. Little bit higher in the, at the high school level. And the middle school starts to taper off a bit when you get down into the lower grades. Twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, it dropped significantly that you're looking at chronic absenteeism at about twenty percent across the board. You know, at the high school, went to about thirty percent. But for the most part, it was in the low twenties, some point even teens, as well as the absentee for ten days or more. I skipped twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one because of the unusual school year where it went from hybrid to remote, in and out. It was very difficult to track it. But for this past school year, the numbers were dramatically higher. This is just through March. They haven't compiled them for year end yet. But as you can see by the district, the absent ten or more days is over fifty percent. Chronically absent ten percent or more is at about forty-five percent. When you look at the high school, it's in the mid to upper fifties. And again, it barely goes below fifty percent for the rest of the schools. What's really interesting here is for the first time the state started tracking chronically absent twenty percent. And across the board, again, you're looking at about twenty percent or higher for the district and most of the schools. So pre-pandemic and post-pandemic are really starkly different. And I think that we can extrapolate from that, that the pandemic clearly had a an impact on absenteeism. So that, I think, will go to inform you as far as what we need to do to try to keep the kids in school, try to keep the kids open, try to keep the kids protected. One of the interesting points that I found is the mean age for cases. If you look from the beginning of June last year, when schools started getting out, you see in, in the summertime, it went from about thirty-two years up to about thirty-seven years. And then when schools came back in and dropped down again. The reason for that is you have more testing going on. You had the pool testing, you had test and stay. You had more availability for testing. There was antigen testing available as well as PCR. So it went along pretty much for the whole year. At about thirty-five years or lower. In early June, for some reason, and it looks to be the, the lack of testing for the school age. The, the mean age jumped dramatically, almost ten years to up to forty-three years old for the mean, the average age of cases. That is a significant increase. And we don't think that it's a matter of the kids not getting it. It's a matter of them not being detected and not being entered into the system. One of the things that this tells us is that we need to try to ramp up our collection of data for at-home cases. To that end, we have created a database where we ask people to self-report their at-home tests. And it's starting to get more and more traffic. We're hoping, especially as school comes, that we're going to start seeing more and more families respond to that. Some of the mitigation strategies that we've seen work elsewhere, and again, these are not recommendations. It's not my place to make recommendations to you at this point. There's still a lot of discussion that needs to happen. But these are some things that we've seen work in other communities and other areas. One of the, one of the big pieces of information to keep in mind is you have by presenting this information as early as we can with you in the summertime, gives you an opportunity to have mitigation protocols in place. So you can have bright line triggers for implementation, whether it is masking or close contacts or anything that the school committee wants to implement. But you do it by, you know, certain triggers, whether it's positivity rate, cluster outbreaks, hospitalizations. Having that information upfront and having it available for people in a transparent way so that they know what to expect and they're not caught off guard, goes a long way towards getting buy-in for that because they'll know ahead of time what's going to be expected if these points get hit. Second of all, I want to try to focus on the unvaccinated population. Most of you may have heard that Novavax recently was approved by the CDC. It's a traditional vaccine, similar to the J and J. And that could reduce hesitancy by people who may not want to have, want to get the mRNA, but they were reluctant to get the J and J because of the issues that they had. And one of the things that we want to try to do is bring education about vaccination without advocacy. In that, we want to probe hesitancy. We talked to people who were unvaccinated. Why are they unvaccinated? What is, what is it that's preventing them? Like I said, they could be, they could have a strong belief system that makes it so they resist or don't want to get vaccinated. There may be a physical component to it. There may be allergies. Could be any number of things. It's not necessarily based on partisan politics. So we need to keep that in mind as well. Pool testing and distribution of at-home testing kits is really going to be key. There are less and less people that are accessing PCR tests, antigen tests in favor of at-home tests. And we want to make sure that it gets distributed. And when we do distribute them, try to get their email so that we can send them a link to the database so they can self-report. My understanding is the mayor has been asked and is working with other collaborative town members to ask the state to reinstitute and fund pool testing. That's a very key point. And was very helpful during the school year. One of the things to remember with pool testing as well is that it's not as onerous as it sounds or that it, or as people make it out to be. As Megan pointed out in one of our discussions earlier, it's about two hours in the morning once a week. It takes about five minutes for each student. So it's not all that intrusive, it's not all that labor intensive. It can be done. It can be done quickly and it can be done without a lot of obstacles to it. Want to try to form partnerships with other collaborators and jurisdictions. We have, as Jennifer told you, up, up top with Deerfield, Sunderland and Montague, there'll be a couple of other towns at some point. The school committees can talk with other school committees for best practices. The MIAA, as far as you know, with athletic teams and any of the protocols that needs to be instituted for there. Education and awareness through communication again is key. Having these special meetings is real helpful, I'm sure. Having it available on public cable television is helpful. You want to use your local news, social media. Have information available for students to take home. That's one of the key items that we've found that's been very successful, especially among families with who speak a second language other than English. Their kids bring stuff home from school and they can interpret it for them. And it becomes a very effective means of spreading the information. And we also want to encourage, and I can't say this enough, encourage reporting of at-home test results. The more data we get, the better we can look at mitigation and protocols that we want to institute guidelines. But also, we can start to sense on how it's being transmitted. What households are being affected, what workspaces are being affected. What school classrooms are being affected. The more data we have, the more information we have, the better we can address this. And in a summary and lessons learned, the total cases, even though we're up at about eight thousand, there's about forty-five hundred, forty-six hundred for Greenfield. That's likely undercounted for a lot of reasons. Number one is very early on. Children under five and even those in lower grade schools, parents and pediatricians were reluctant to test them. So you weren't getting a real accurate look at those numbers. Looking back at it, between the beginning of the pandemic and in early September, Greenfield had just three school age children who had reported positive. And clearly, more than three kids were positive. And now we're looking at at-home tests that aren't reported into the state's Maven system. We're looking at probably an estimated sixty to seventy percent higher. So the numbers that you're seeing really pale in comparison to the accurate numbers. One of the places to look at would be the wastewater summaries that we're getting. Where it shows that we're really looking at about a, almost one percent infection rate. If you look at it over a long term. Like I said, BA four and BA five indicate very high transmissibility. They evade immune protection. And that's especially true in the waning period of a vaccination. That's where full vaccination and boosters become important. If we can get people who have had the first regimen of vaccination to go for their boosters, that's going to help an awful lot. We know that they're not hesitant because they've already been vaccinated. So that's a significant point to make. Surges, as I told you earlier, have about a four to five month cycle. There's zero indication that that's going to subside, especially as we're looking over in Europe and India right now to be a two point seven five. That's going to be here. It's not going to be too long and I think we're going to be looking at it again. Holidays, special events, social gatherings like weddings, funerals, birthday parties, they can trigger surges. We want to be aware of that, especially for instance in December during winter vacation and in the spring vacation. When families go to Florida for Disney World, they go on vacations to areas that may not have the same types of protocols that Massachusetts has or that Greenfield has. They may go to weddings. I know, for instance, I I did a cluster investigation of an out-of-state wedding last year. And found a number of people from the greater Greenfield area that had been to this wedding. So we're looking at it being brought in from other places as well. Similar to the cycle that you've seen before as far as the transmission of COVID, there are no boundaries. You know, it doesn't care about state lines, it doesn't care about town borders. So we want to keep an eye on those. And in in our area, we don't get a lot of sequencing. I mean, we're getting it in the wastewater treatment reports. But that's just giving us a general idea. We're not getting a sense of the sequencing for how it spreads. Whether somebody's got BA one point one seven five or BA four or, you know, coming up BA two point seven five. We have been in discussions with the Broad Institute at MIT. They're very interested in partnering with us to sequence tests. So hopefully, we're going to be able to do that come the end of the summer. And that'll put us far ahead of a lot of other areas, getting a handle on this. And finally, vaccines reduce severity. They're not shields, that we know. People can still contract COVID. But there is a very limited likelihood of them ending up in hospitals or in death and having anything more than just mild symptoms. And we also know that mask enclosures reduce cluster spread. Those may not be optimal, those may not be the choices, but we do know- Those may not be optimal. Those may not be the choices, but we do know that they work. So that's always something to keep in mind as well. And one of the things when we look at masking, and this is something that I like to point out, this is a chart of flu in Greenfield going back to the flu season of 2019. As you can see, there's a cycle to it. The first four months or so of 2019, you had, you know, a measurable amount of flu being reported. It goes away for a few months, then starts up again in November and December and again goes through April. At that point in 2020, when COVID first hit, there was the shutdown and there was the masking. But the next 20 months from April of 2020 through mid-December of 2021, there was one case of flu. That has to do with masking. It has to do with distancing. And we know that flu, similar to COVID, is aerosol transmission. So those are, that is a really good demonstration, I think, of how the different protocols can help stop the spread. And at that point, I will cease the presentation and cede it back to you folks.
Dr. Sullivan, thank you very, very much. That was absolutely fascinating information. I love how hyper local it is and I appreciate the way you explained so many things. What I would like to do is open it up for the school committee to ask questions of you as well as questions that might be relevant more for Director Hoffman or Nurse Children. And I'll let you guys decide how to answer them. I will, I usually don't have a lot of questions. Excuse me, but I have a few, but I'm going to wait and see if any of the school committee members ask what I was going to ask. And I'll open it up now for any, any questions or discussion. Don't be shy, guys. You're never shy. Nobody?
I've got one.
Go ahead.
First of all, thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Jack, so much for the presentations. Really very helpful. Jack, I'm wondering, could you show your screen again and take us back to the slide of recommendations? I see the slide, but it's not quite big enough yet.
Hang on one second. I think I was frozen there. Let me try again. This one here?
Yeah, I think so. Yep. My first question is about the bright line triggers. I'm wondering if you all could provide recommendations for bright line triggers and which protocols should be activated at which trigger?
Can I cede that question to Jennifer?
Sure.
So there are several things we follow. Basically, we look at the numbers in general. We are looking at hospitalizations. However, I think what we're trying to determine, as you saw in Jack's very few early slides, is when things expand and we see that spread, right? And I think that's a pretty bright line right there. It's, I mean, we've said how everything spreads. We say how certain things work and it's like a sandwich effect, you know, layer upon layer. I think that with the limitations that we have, it's very, very difficult for us to say, so when, you know, percent positivity goes up or when this goes up because we're only getting state reporting now once a week. People aren't reporting their home tests to us. So we're going a lot by what we hear. We go by what we see in the nursing homes and in community, what we hear from somebody saying, yeah, I'm positive, but my three other family members took home tests and they're positive. We're going by wastewater and that's why we're, we're very big on trying to get pool testing staying in the school because that helps give us a lot of information. And we know we know that there's a lot of outcry. We know DESI may not support that, but it does help health departments make some very important decisions. So I know I'm not asking trigger, I'm not answering your questions, but the bright line trigger itself has changed because the information we get now is so limited. So I think with community support and community cooperation and us educating people, maybe people would feel more apt to give us the information we need. So we can give better recommendations. But on that note, I'm going to be meeting with Superintendent DeBarge next week to go over some, you know, if we were kind of cashing out a lot of the other details to just have some strategies in mind that could get back to, you know, to, to the, I was going to say the city council, to the school committee. So I know I didn't really answer you, Glenn, but a lot of the information has changed from when we, when we were discussing masks in person.
And if I could also just throw in here, I'm glad I ceded to Jennifer. Glenn, the, a lot of it's going to be determined as to the mitigation will be commensurate with the activity. So for instance, what is recommended for a classroom might be different from what's recommended for a football game or for a basketball practice. You know, for the buses. And a lot of it also will be based on what's doable, what is the consensus by the school committee as well as what is it that parents want? So you know, the, what those triggers are, it has to take into consideration what all the different components of it are. You know, the activity, the place, the indoor versus outdoor. All of those items. So I think at this point, it's to go follow up with what Jennifer Ross said. It's really difficult to share it because I'm not quite sure that we really know yet what it's going to be.
So, I mean, it, it sounds like for sure we need to be calling our legislators and telling them we want the pool testing back in the fall. I mean, we're not going to be in a good position if the virus really starts to take off and then we're like, oh, now we want it. You know, we have, they'd have to start planning now if that was going to be in place. So that's just one place my mind goes because you're, you're saying that a recommendation is these bright line triggers, but you can't have bright line triggers unless you have the data. And there's a lot of obstacles to getting the data without that pool testing. So that's just one place my mind goes. And I guess my other question was on the recommendation about forming partnerships with other collaboratives and jurisdictions to influence DPH protocols. Are there any DPH protocols in place now that you think would would be worthy of some advocacy for a change? And what would the change be?
One of the things that, that DPH has is that in the Maven system, which is the Massachusetts Virtual Epidemiological Network, you cannot get access to other town information unless they have given you that permission. So what we need to do is work in conjunction with those towns to be able to share information and work collaboratively, collaboratively. So for instance, if there is a restaurant in Orange, where there are people that work there from Greenfield, they can let us know that there are people that have been infected there that are carrying this back and that it is a cluster. Also that there may be people that we know that go there that, you know, go there to eat. They may go to another restaurant. They may go to another locale in another town and get infected there. If we can start to share some information at that level, we can make a better effort to try to slow the spread and the transmission.
Could I just jump in real quick?
Absolutely.
So, and I want to give a couple of points. By working with our neighbors, Montague, Deerfield and Sunderland, we were able to really hone in on, you know, certain places people were, you know, or worked. And then we're, you know, traveling back and forth to Greenfield and so on and so forth. And we were able to really limit the spread once we actually found the source. And we were really, thanks to the nurses and their endless hours and, and working that they do, and I'm forever grateful. You know, we're able to like really tie it into and stop it. And this was working, you know, with other jurisdictions. And now we're going to be joining, two other towns are going to be joining us, Chutesbury and Leverett. And I'm going to be requesting access to them as well. So that's going to give us a bigger picture. Plus, we talked to, you know, the FERCAG, the Public Health Nurses Speak. So we're constantly in communication. What, what COVID has done for public health is it has made jurisdictions speak to one another and really, really work together to, to really share ideas and discuss, you know, how people are interacting with each other and what we can do to limit that. So it's, it's really just being transparent and sharing information with each other, especially when it's affecting that community.
And one of the things, Glenn, to your point is how it would affect schools. One of the ways that you might want to start working, collaborating with other districts is with athletics, for instance. You know, teams that will travel in league games, whether it's in football or tennis or basketball, you know, any number of things. You want to be able to, be able to share information. So working with the MIAA, working with DPH, you might want to open up those for collaboration.
Oh, you're on mute, Jennifer.
One more thing. And I may have my nurse jump in. But the DPH, when there's an exposure, I want to say a very dirty word here that no one likes, but masks. People have to wear masks after an exposure. Schools don't necessarily have that. DESI doesn't recognize that. So when someone is exposed in the community, you know, if someone is positive, they have to wear their mask five days after. If they're exposed, we recommend people wearing masks so they don't transmit it. Especially because people are symptomatic before they test positive on home tests. We've been seeing this very commonly. I'm sure everyone that's watching this has seen that. So Megan, did I, do I need to add anything to that? I mean, DESI is a very different, they follow very different guidelines than the Department of Public Health.
We're aware.
Yeah. And, and it makes it challenging, you know? And there's two, there's two schools of thought, no, no pun intended, but there are two schools of thought. And, you know, we work for the Department of Public Health. So we work for the city of Greenfield. So that's our viewpoint. But, you know, people hate the M-word. But it does work. As the flu slideshowed very clearly, when masks were in place, there was only one case of the flu. We're not saying for everyone to wear masks. We're not saying that. But the DPH does recommend that after an exposure.
Thank you.
Johnson, we said you're all set.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, I let folks know when I RSVP'd that I would need to step off. So I will need to step off. If I can rejoin you later, I will. But thank you very much. This was very helpful.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the school committee? I'll jump in if you guys don't. I have a few questions. So I'm going to jump in. I am looking for something that's not directly COVID-related, but I was very interested in the chronic absenteeism slides. And I would hope that I could hear from a public health perspective, very generally, as well as perhaps from the superintendent. What are the contributing factors to chronic absenteeism beyond COVID? Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Director Hoffman, please, Jennifer. You are on mute. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
One of the things that, and that's a very strong slide, as we all saw, but one of the recommendations is if you're sick, you need to stay home. Right? So it's kind of one of those things where you know, you have to stay home for five days or till your symptoms improve. So kids are home. And, and, and that affects things. And since virtual learning stopped, that affected absenteeism, obviously, right? So that's one of the reasons I think it did go up, but it is directly related to COVID because of the, you know, staying home for five days. And it would be the same tomorrow. Right? If you're sick, you have to stay home. And then if you get COVID again, because you know, the variants that are coming out, you know, could get you sick again. It's another five days. That's so that's one of my answers. Jack?
I mean, clearly, the pandemic is the, the major contributor to the spike in the chronic absenteeism. If you look at 2019 and 2020, you, you see how low it is across there, you know, as well as 2018, 2019, a little bit higher, but still not at the level that we're looking at right now. And the fact that 20, that 20% or higher chronic absenteeism is now a thing. I mean, that is really something that should open everybody's eyes. The only difference between 2018 to 2019 to this year is the pandemic, you know, is the virus. There, there have not been any other.
Well, I guess, I guess if I could interrupt you just for a second, I guess what I'm looking for almost is like, okay, we know the virus has been a contributing factor. We're also seeing this kind of chronic absenteeism from the workforce. And we, we know that the, you know, that the virus is a contributing factor to that as well. And then we're seeing all of these ups and downs in the economy. And so I know from anecdotal and from working in education with families that we have, you know, chronic absenteeism is also influenced by poverty, by homelessness, by, you know, unemployment or work issues in the families, you know, needing to work and needing the kids to take on roles at home that kids should not be taking on, all of those things. I was, I'm, I guess I'm interested in how, how do we look at it more broadly than just the, the ill, the illness of the pandemic did this? What other things should we or can we be doing? What is being discussed in the public health world about that?
I, I think that, that, that goes to the, to Glenn's first question is what is the mitigation? I think this is something that needs to inform the committee and the administrators as to what can we do to keep these kids in school? What can we do to keep it open? What can we do to keep the learning process going? That's as significant as the physical recovery of COVID. So I think that, that there needs to be some discussion as to at what point do we institute remote learning? Do we, you know, virtual learning? At what point do we allow kids to come back into school? At what point do we institute mitigation factors to keep everybody safe? In order to allow people to return to the school? So those I think are the discussions that need to take place at this point. And I think that's what the. Chronic absenteeism points out, and I see Dr. DeBarge's hand raised and I am so glad about that one.
I, I would like to share that. I, I agree that clearly our attendance concerns increased dramatically after the pandemic, but. As the administrators looked at our data from even prior to the pandemic, we were not happy with the level of chronic absenteeism even prior. So there are a variety of things that we're looking to do, including. Looking at the protocols that we follow for students who are having an increase in absenteeism and. So there's a variety of internal things because even prior to this pandemic period, we, we think our attendance needs to be higher than it was. But I do want to speak to one of the things that Jack brought up. Is I need to just make it clear, I cannot unilaterally make the decision to go to remote learning. I also can't make the decision to close schools or classrooms unilaterally. I have to get permission from Desi to utilize any of those strategies. So this is, you know, it's a conversation that, you know, I'm, I'm looking forward very much to when Jennifer and I meet. So that we can start looking at some of the logistics. I can follow up with Desi to see what they've got on the horizon. What factors we need to think about. I'm interested to hear from Desi, again, going back to some of Glenn's points. What would they be looking at in terms of bright light triggers? Because I know that. Toward the end of last school year, Jen, Meg, myself, one of my nurses met with DPH and Desi folks to talk about things. And I think when, when we talk about Desi and DPH are very different entities, that is extremely true. And we saw that very clearly in our conversation. So. You know, I know that when. We need to hammer out some, some ideas to bring back to the school committee. I'm, I'm positive we will come up with thoughts that will be. Supportive of the community, supportive of keeping our students in school. And. Also, I need to, you know, just. Kind of speak to, as Jen said, she works for DPH. We do still have to answer the Desi. So it's a, it's a balancing act, but I really. I, I think there are a lot of places where we easily are in the same place, including the fact that we're. Working to support the vaccine clinic coming up at the end of August or for folks who would like to access that. So, you know, we are, we are in a partnership. We'll just have to. Figure out how to balance all of this and. Partners with the state, so.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I mean, it just does really outline, right, all of the differences in approaches. And, and I guess priorities as well, obviously between, you know, DPH and Desi. But I, I find just from this one presentation and conversation. There are a lot of places where we can work together and make some real headway and make some real difference for the community. So I appreciate all of that. I, I want to next go back to the bright line triggers and ask one very specific question. The city of Worcester did put one of those in. And I can actually get the wording of how their school committee worded it. But I, I don't know if we have the technology. They use specifically the wastewater treatment numbers from the city. And put in a bright line trigger for, I believe it was masking, but I can, you know, we can go back and look. That was based on those numbers in wastewater. And I know we're doing something in Greenfield, but. I'm really ignorant of the details and if something like that would be, would be possible here.
Amy, do you want me to go? This is Meg.
I would love that. If you feel comfortable trying to answer that, yes, thank you.
So wastewater testing is like my, my baby. So we, we are doing wastewater testing in Greenfield and it's specifically for Greenfield. It captures all of our data because some people are on private septics. It gives us a really great idea and we did start posting our results on the Greenfield Health Department website. So you can really see when we're going through these big jumps.
Well, I, I work in an office, my, my real job, I work in an office that has been in person the entire pandemic, still in person. COVID has come through from family transmission, but we've never passed it in the office. But of course, we're obsessed with the wastewater treatment numbers since you started posting them because of our office environment.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think, you know, for me, that sounds like a fantastic idea because that's what we, that's how we really know about our numbers. So I, masking at a certain point, and I don't want to be the person to pick that point, but I think that that would be a great way to.
So we have the technology. Who knows where that would go if we ever get to that point again? Or if that's something that the school committee would decide would, would be helpful and supportive to the schools. You know, there's a lot of ifs there, but I did appreciate that one city had kind of taken a step. With a bright line trigger like that. And they tweeted it. So I, I can't, I screenshot the, the tweet in case we ever got to that point. So just one thing to kind of think about. But so that's great to know we could do that if we needed to. Thank you, Meg. I have a question that is totally ignorant. I hope you don't mind and completely unrelated to what we've already talked about. The collaborative that you spoke of that. Jack, you're a part of is, is, this is not our education collaborative that we have on the school side. Can you tell me about your collaborative? So we understand where, where this resource comes from?
I think that's a Jennifer question.
Thank you.
So I'm going to answer your question, Amy, but I wanted to make a comment about.
Please.
Your, about the bright line. I think that. We couldn't ever even discuss masks if we didn't have pool testing to even know what's going on in the schools. Right? So we kind of need information in order to even say, based on this much, we could do this, right? So if we don't have the information, we could just say, well, we know that there's maybe 10 kids that, you know, it's, that's not fact.
Yeah.
You know, so we need that data. So that's why it's very important to get support from as, as, as many people as we can to continue that. As for the collaborative, the collaborative is from the Department of Public Health. It's a state grant. It is, this collaborative is a contact tracing COVID-19 grant. It focuses on everything COVID-19. So I have, of course, Jack Sullivan, our epidemiologist. I have Robin Neep, she is the nurse for Montague. I have Mary Sloan and she's the nurse for Deerfield and for Sunderland. And we have Megan from the rear for Greenfield. And we basically, the, the priority of the grant is. Basically contact tracing and determining cluster events and reaching out and education. And anything COVID, that's where the grant falls under.
How long is the core?
It is for two years. We're entering our second year.
Yeah, okay, okay.
The second grant that we would just awarded is an intermunicipal grant. Where now Chutesbury and that's from the Office of Local and Regional Health. And that is, it's a municipal grant to make sure we meet our obligations on an inspection level. However, several of the groups that we work with don't have enough nurses. And one of our ideas is we, I am, we were approved of this grant and I would like to have. One full time and one part time nurse. And I'm thinking that if it would help with pool testing, and this is just way out there, that we can use a nurse to help two hours. A day to assist with that, but that's once I get the funding. And we could have that, you know, as a rotation cycle to assist. Because that's how important we think it is. Two different grants, but this one's specifically for contact tracing. And this can get extended another year if the Department of Public Health feels it's necessary.
Awesome. Okay.
And if I could throw, if I could just throw one thing in here as well, just a personal observation that. One of the things that I've found when, since I've come on board is how incredibly. Not, I don't want to say helpful, I mean, how incredibly knowledgeable and how hard the team works. Jennifer, Megan, Robin and Mary are rock stars. And I can tell you that from, you know, having worked with the Community Tracing Collaborative, which has been considered to be the gold standard in the country. Massachusetts CTC. And these people are every bit the peer of the people that I worked with, you know, they. They are able to reach an enormous number of people that you wouldn't expect one person to be able to do. And the three of them together really do blanket it. And Jennifer is absolutely one of the strongest and most. Influential directors that I have worked with.
I love it.
So you guys, you're in a really good place in Greenfield, absolutely.
Thank you for that. We, we found a number of ways we can work very well with the Department of Public Health. We've had a great relationship with them since the beginning of this unfortunate pandemic. And it's great that we can do this and continue to work together. And I do see that just, you know, hearing. All of this detail around what's been happening in Greenfield is so eye opening for the things that. I think that we can assist with if we share resources, information, it's, it's, yeah, there's a lot of options there. Okay, I think I have. I don't have any other questions right now. I just made some notes here. I don't have any other questions right now, but I might have more later and I might contact you. I'm hoping other school committee members have questions and I saw a member of Martini just turned her camera on. Maybe she has a question. Any other questions or comments from the school committee? Don't be shy. She's shaking her head. No, no questions. Remember Denise? I see you. No questions. Remember Wall? Anybody? You guys are all good? Okay. All right. Excellent. So at this point, I really want to thank you for all of this really great information. And just check on two final things before we ask for a motion to adjourn. You gave some information about being able to get. Like report your positive at home tests, which we currently can't do, but you're starting to do. Will we get some information? People are going to ask, how can, how can we get that information out to folks?
Information about accessing the self-reporting form, you mean?
Yeah.
When, what we're hoping to do is when the tests are distributed. They will be given an email address to send their email address to as well. It'll go to the health department. At that point, we then can send them a link so that they can get onto the secure form.
Oh, so it is like a closed loop, like they have to use one of the tests they get from you in order to put it into that system?
Nope, nope. If they, if they buy their own at home test, that can be done as well, as long as they. Submit their email to the Department of Health, we can then send them a link. It's secure and it's password protected.
Okay.
But they can call back.
Information, we can get information from Meg. Thank you. Okay, we will do that. I just want to make sure because if people ask questions, I want to get them the information. And I know that's, it's, it's a great slideshow. So thank you again. This has really been informational. I appreciate the time and you guys reaching out. Or Robin. Oh, that's Robin. Oh, now I get it. Yes, I go Robin. Okay, awesome. I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved. That was Member Martini in a second.
Second.
Remember Denise? We do online or on remote meetings have to do a roll call. So Member Denise?
Yes.
Member Martini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wall?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And I know Glenn has left and I believe neither Mayor Wiederberger or Member Extron were here. So it does pass unanimously and we are adjourned at whatever time it is, 7:12 PM. Thank you all again. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.